This meeting of Norwood City Council is hereby called to order. Please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, is the body we congregate in these council chambers. We pray for thy divine guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. I want to wish get well wishes to our auditor Jim Stith. He had to go to the hospital a couple of days ago with gallstones. And I think he has passed the stone but is still not doing, not feeling incredibly well. He might get home tonight or perhaps tomorrow. And he will be having surgery later on this month, so I hope he gets well soon. And I think congratulations are in order to Mr. Bonzal, who is now a father. You want to tell us about Noah?
Yeah, so Noah James Bonzal was born on Thursday, 7 pounds, 2.3 ounces, 19 and 1/2 inches. And the baby's perfect, and so we're very, very blessed. And very blessed by so many people in the community that reached out, well wishes, congratulations. Just want to thank all of them. It's just great to live in a place like Norwood where it does feel like a small town. And there's so many people that have rallied around us, and we're just very blessed for that.
Life as you know it, knew it, will no longer exist, for sure. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Present.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Bingo.
Oh, here.
Mr. Sankar.
Here.
Mr. Braden.
Here.
All members of council are present. We have two requests to amend the agenda. The first is to add an administration report from Mayor Williams where he will address the two letters that are on your desks, and then to add a Parks and Recreation Streets and Infrastructure Committee report. Mr. Braden.
Request to amend the agenda as stated.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzal. Is there any discussion? Ms. Stevenson?
Yes, could you just identify where those items are going to go in the flow of the meeting?
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand.
Where in the flow of the meeting are we adding those?
The administration reports goes under Administration Reports.
Is that after?
After introductory readings of resolutions, which there aren't any.
Thank you.
So it's number, it's K?
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I thought it was removed since we didn't have any. I see it there.
And then the Parks and Recreation Streets and Infrastructure are under Reports of Standing Committees?
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We do have two sets of minutes, March 12th and March 26th. I don't know if you want to deal with them individually or collectively. They were emailed out to you earlier. Mr. Clark.
I'd move that we approve both sets of minutes as of read.
Seconded by Mr. Braden, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have two requests to address council, but they are not on agenda items, so we will deal with those a little later on. We'll move on to Reports of Standing Committees. The first is Economic Development and Community Engagement. Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. To the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your Committee of Economic Development and Community Engagement, to whom it was referred committee goals by leave, to submit the following report. Business Development. Peter Horton, Sloan Nicholas, and Tom Rowe presented an overview, an update on the status of securing a tenant for the development of the site, at the site, excuse me, of the former Zombeal Building. At this point, they are seeking preferably a tenant for the whole building, which could potentially house 300 to 400 employees. Colliers International is the broker and has hosted an open house to attract interest. Moving forward, the company is watching market trends and asks the community and cities to support their build-out with word of mouth and ultimately with agreement to vacate Harris Avenue. To date, Terex has invested $1.2 million into the site, including environmental cleanup. They are currently working with the city and MSD to resolve historical challenges regarding the storm sewer and the new pipes. They've expressed that an ideal tenant in this market is looking for walkability for their employees, so the advertising of the site is leveraging the existing small businesses and the corridor structure to attract businesses to Norwood's quality of life. Terex is active in Norwood and on the current Xavier University Health United Building and is working with HGDC as well to audit the Montgomery Road corridor for development opportunities as well. The second agenda item that we discussed was the CRA process recommendations. The Law Department has provided feedback for the committee to review and respond to while considering revisions to the CRA process. Further discussion in committee will follow as we prefer input, sorry, I got stumbled up there, from the administration prior to reporting out to the whole of council. The third item was quality of life. Implementation teams for the community agreement are meeting monthly on first Wednesdays. The next meeting is Wednesday, May 1st at Company 2 Firehouse at 6:30 PM. Some initial successes for the city are the Cleanup Week activities that just completed, block captain recruitment and training, foundation funding for agreement plans such as the welcome bags and the word "community councils," local fundraising for reimbursement grants, and ongoing support from organizations across the city who host the implementation meetings. Economic Development Implementation Team is drafting a map to promote local businesses and a one-stop business development experience, too. Community perception goals are being worked towards through artworks grant request or murals, and this Committee of Council has requested that council support our request to the Planning Commission to consider the mural definition, zoning amendment, and guidelines, and artworks permitting needs which are attached to this report. There was a letter to council as well as an overview of their permitting needs and the drafted zoning amendment for murals, et cetera. Respectfully submitted, Leslie Stevenson, Chairperson, John Braden, and Eric Thompson.
Mr. Braden?
Request to accept the committee report.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson, is there any discussion? Mrs. Hanahan?
Okay, I'm sorry. I would like to discuss the murals for a while. I've been kind of trying to follow this a little bit because I know it was coming up. And I have many concerns about the zoning amendment and that being done right now. I want to start, I love murals. I do. However, I love specific murals, and I just would hate to see a mural that I thought or my neighbor thought was ugly or offensive in our town. And I want to know who decides this. With this mural amendment here we got, I have lots of questions, and I don't expect them all to be answered, but these are my concerns with moving forward with this right now. First of all, the first paragraph is completely confusing. I showed it to several people and were like, what? You know, what does this mean? I also, you know, there are questions specifically what content is allowed. Apparently, everything is allowed. Political statements and graffiti art, is that allowed? Can we say, hey, we would like to limit the content to be history over 100 years old or 100 years ago? And specifically, who approves the content? Who approves the board? And who is the board comprised of? I think these are really important. What are the qualifications for the mural painter? Who decides what is aesthetically pleasing to our residents or if it will enhance the community's appearance? Artworks is a wonderful organization. I personally have donated art to Artworks for years for their fundraisers. There are some of their murals, in my opinion, that are absolutely wonderful. We love looking at them. However, there are also many, in my opinion, and I'm saying in my opinion because we all have different opinions, that are absolutely, what I would call horrible, is a piece of art. It might be fine in your house, but out in public, I feel it's horrible. Some may appreciate, some art is appreciated for the creative expression, and it's the same art that others may cringe at the sight of. And I think that needs to be considered. The neighborhood process that's in here, what does it really mean? It appears even if the neighborhood residents dislike the mural, that does not necessarily stop the mural from being installed. The word "could" is used quite a bit in here when I think it should be "should," and it's very, very confusing. You know, you could do this for your, but then it says you have to do it. So I think a lot of the wording is confusing. I'd also like to know what are the legal reasons that the Planning Commission, our council, would have that they can deny a mural application? Are there any legal reasons we can do it, or do we have to worry if we deny something because that we're going to get sued? Locations are another concern of mine. Locations for instituting this program really needs to be looked at. This is a new program, and we need to be very cautious. Maybe our first attempt should be in our manufacturing district. I know that sounds harsh, but we have to start somewhere. I don't believe, I think there will be issues with having murals in the view of any residential housing space, and I know that's pushing it. However, do the residents that live at Lafayette want to look out their front door and on the back of, see on the back of Surrey Square graffiti murals? I don't think so. I don't know. I wouldn't buy a house if I had to look at graffiti murals across from me. Some of you might. I know some of you probably would, but I think it's something we have to think about. And then if you look at the quote "mural" that was on Duck Crete wall, neighbors complained about that for years. It was never even removed, it just kind of wore away. And the neighbors had to look at this for years, and it was not, I mean, it wasn't anything that I think, the neighbors didn't like. Most of the neighbors did not appreciate the art. I'm getting there. The maintenance, who enforces it? I think that this plan should put together a maintenance plan. It shouldn't leave it up to the artist to put up a maintenance plan. We need to be ahead of that. We need specific guidelines. It mentioned lighting. Are we going to have, and I think that needs to be really defined of what murals we would want lighted and how we want them lighted. How will the city ever be able to remove a deteriorated mural? We can't enforce many of our maintenance codes now without years of legal battles. We've all dealt with it as council people. And how will vandalized murals be addressed? How much time do they have to fix them? Do they have to get the original artists so colors match? I think there's a bunch of stuff there. And I know that we have artists here, Mr. Thompson for one, and I'm an artist, and I'm sure there are several of you out there. We all know the statement that art is subjective and it can't be denied. I don't want to drive down my city streets and see artwork I don't like. I, as a council member, got complaints about the mural on the building of Carter &amp; Mills. I believe I got them, I don't believe Leslie or James got them, but I am known in that ward. I had community, I did a lot of community service, and they called me about it. So I'm aware, several people may have loved those murals, but I assure you that everybody did not. I am aware that everyone's artistic style and creative expression is not the same. And I am concerned that public artwork without complete specific guidelines is going to be a major problem. I'm trying to speed this up. Everyone has opinions that differ in public art issues. You can drive up Montgomery Road, there is a tire shop up in Evanston, and there is a, on the side of this tire store, there is this mural of a man and a woman, and the sediment is beautiful. It's very nice, it's heartwarming. The mural itself is in major disrepair, and the mural is only four or five years old. And, you know, that's a concern. It's my understanding after watching the meeting that Artworks is applying for a grant, and what would help them would be considered for funding is if Norwood was in the process of a zoning change, and we would also be considered for some mural funding. And I hope I got that right. You can correct me if I'm wrong in a moment. If this is the reason for pushing forward now, I want to state that our concern should be for our city and not worry about Artworks grant opportunities. If we are going to do this, we need to do this right and not rush through any of the process. We need to know exactly what we're doing because murals are for a long time. I don't think that the plan is ready to go before the Planning Commission until it is complete with specific detail and clear language, in clear defined language, which I don't think it has. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. I just had a question just about if the Planning Commission were to approve something, it goes to count like a zoning change, then comes to council to either agree with their recommendation or take action kind of against it. Does council have any opportunities to amend items once the Planning Commission, like, let's just say they approve something, can we amend it at that point? Or do we have to only consider what the Planning Commission approved? I've been a thought director coming to that.
Mr. Moore?
My recollection is that, yeah, council can make changes to it. We have the Market Garden is under council's consideration right now, that idea which is open for council to come up with amendments and perhaps add something different than what, than the Planning Commission's flat denial.
Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. And just a follow-up if you don't mind. So any changes that council would make does not go back to Planning Commission? Is that correct?
Ah, is that, Mr. Moore?
That's my understanding, yes. I mean, I would want to absolutely start doing some research before we got to the point of vote on something, just to make double sure, but that's my, as I recall, that is, that's the way it works. It has to come through Planning Commission first. Council can make changes at that point.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I do want to respond to some of the questions that Councilmember Hanahan posed. Whoa. That's different. So, the introduction of the amendment document that does have the guidelines in it, it starts off by providing an overview of the distinction between signs and murals. It's a synopsis of some of the research that's out there in terms of how cities have leveraged outdoor murals. So if, in fact, members of council or others would like more information, there is a longer document available that does outline some of that same information distinguishing between commercial speech and non-commercial speech. And that's important because our current sign code does not define murals. So that's, that was the impetus for this entire consideration. That goes back to a public hearing with the BZA back in February, I believe, of '18. So this Committee of Council has been talking with Artworks since August of 2018. They've come to committee before to present, and they have provided some feedback. One point of distinction that I think is important, Artworks has a program that is run through the City of Cincinnati's permitting and ordinance processes. This is not an effort to implement murals solely through Artworks. They happen to be a resource because they are a national expert at what they do. So with that in mind, I do want to make sure that it's clear, the bottom of page one has a section entitled "Prohibited Murals," and it does give some distinction there. If there is more that council would like to see there, please get it to me as soon as possible. Our committee is eager to report out on this in a way that is actionable. I heard reference to a board. There is no board that governs this. Under the establishment of community engagement process for permits and other places, the reference goes back to enforcement being the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission and/or council. So this is not specific to a third party. So when we think about who would be deciding, it is actually us. So that's important, I think, as well. There is a process for resident input, Norwood stakeholder input, and I think that's important to notice as well because it has to have the agreement of the property owner. So if I'm a property owner and I want to self-fund or work with Artworks to have a mural on my building, I have to give permission for that. I would think that property owner would be pretty conscientious about their own property value and their stake in the community. So we're hopeful that, as needed, we can fortify the explanation of the guidelines, but we would be relying on the good judgment of all the people who have invested in Norwood as property owners to help regulate and potentially enforce the guidelines here. A couple other things. There is a section on the back page, last page, excuse me, where it talks about construction and maintenance. Again, if there are questions or recommendations that folks have, please send those to me. We've been discussing this in public meetings for a while, and if there's a feeling that there's a need for more rigor here, I would love to get that input. Just as a reminder, my email is lstephenson@norwood-ohio.com. I also, too, would like to pose a question, Madam President. I had a chance to talk to Mayor Williams about this opportunity for murals to be defined, and I'd like to know, do you have any comments, Mayor Williams?
Mr. Mayor?
Sure, hand me a bomb. Here's the problem I see. There's going to be, when you question art, what is art and what isn't art, sometimes in this city, we can't agree that the sun's coming up from the east. And so I think this is going to take a lot of input. This is going to take a lot of input to the Planning Commission so the right decision is made. Marilyn brought up some, sorry, Ms. Hanahan brought up some valid points about homes on Lafayette Avenue. So there's a lot that has to be considered. I mean, it's just, it all sounds good. I've seen some of those murals downtown, and they're on the side of huge buildings, and some of them really are impressive. But then what constitutes art? What if somebody has a cause that they believe in, and they want that up on the side of the building? You know, and 50% of the other people don't believe in that cause. So I don't know how you do it. If I had the answer, I wouldn't be sitting here. It's going to, it's going to be a very touchy and very inclusive process that's got to be gone through. Because once, once you start this, you're going to have issues on what is art and what is not art? What does the eye see as a pleasure and what does the eye see as something that is ugly or controversial? So I think it's going to take a lot of work, and I, I'll be on the Planning Commission, and I'm, I'd like to say I'm looking forward to all the hearings that we'll have, but I'm not. But I think when the Planning Commission does meet, I will suggest that we adjust our hours because it's usually in the middle of the afternoon. I will recommend that we adjust our hours, you know, so when people are off of work, that they will have the ability to show up and be pro or con. If we have it in the afternoon, then there will be a lot of people that would have liked to show up that couldn't because of their working. So I look, I guess I look forward to the process of it going to the Planning Commission. But I will also tell you that we will hold as many meetings as possible to have everybody's input, and we will hold them at a time that's convenient for people who work.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mayor Williams. Just as a follow-up to your comment, do you have any recommendations on how much more preparation is needed before this is submitted to the Planning Commission for consideration?
That's a good question. Here's, here's what I believe to be the answer. I don't know really for sure what's needed because I cannot guess on what the problems are. And I think the only way that you'll get an indication is to have public hearings at a time that's convenient. And here, because what you may think is a good idea, or we think we've answered all the questions, you could have a Planning Commission meeting, have 15 people show up, and we'll all be looking each other's eyes. I never thought about that. So what I'm encouraging is to have more than one Planning Commission at even times and encourage people to show up and voice their opinion, and then adjust accordingly. Am I making sense?
I believe I understand you saying this is a topic that will get more clarity as it's discussed publicly at a time when residents can show up and express their opinions.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
And just want to point out in your letter to Hamilton County Planning and Development Department, it talks about a May 1st meeting that the Planning Commission meets the first Wednesdays of the month, and we're hopeful for a favorable outcome at their May 1st, 2019 meeting. Would you have expected that this would be passed, or just, Ms. Stevenson, I'm just asking for clarity?
Sure. I, thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I indicated in a letter to the potential grantor that is when our Planning Commission meets, and that if it were to be considered favorably, that's the earliest it could be. That is different than the timeline they're actually working with. And so that, I was just noting that that's the earliest time it could be considered by the Planning Commission. So just a point of clarity, the letter was drafted as part of the report, asking this council to consider sending that letter. Also, as part of the report was a request for this council to consider a request to the Planning Commission. So those are, in addition to accepting the report, two requests to this council to consider as well.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. Just for information, I believe the Planning Commission takes 31 days prior notice, or 33 days?
For public hearings?
Or for, to get anything on their agenda.
Mayor?
I believe you're right. I think we've got one scheduled. I think we do have, it was too late for April, and I think we met with somebody today that has to have a Planning Commission, has to go in front of Planning Commission, and that's to be submitted for May. So I think if you get it in pretty quick, you'll be satisfied. Jerry or Carrie can answer your questions on that.
I just believe I, we had tried to put, our Housing Committee had put it in, and it was 30 days before the meeting, and they refused us. We had to be 31 days. So, but I just wanted to let, for information, say, to let you know that you need to check on that. Madam President, may I ask, come through the chair and ask Ms. Stevenson a question?
Certainly.
Will you explain, so nobody approves the murals? So somebody comes and gets an application for a mural, there is no approval process at all?
That's not correct.
Okay.
The approval process is embedded in the guidelines. So it's kind of like, if a program were to, not a program, I'm sorry, if a, if a structure were to exist in which someone could create a mural, there's a set of guidelines that says this is either what a mural that is permissible, what looks like and be like, or not. So I think that's the extent of how this reads because there is not, at this point, any evidence that there's a governing administrative department that would participate.
Mr. Braden?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I just want to bring up that, I appreciate your input on this, Ms. Hanahan, looks like you've done some research, and I, for one, appreciate it. Some of your questions were addressed in our meeting. We had a very good conversation, in my eyes, about the oversee and the input of the city that would have of Artworks that would, we would want to see driving up and down, you know, Montgomery or anywhere else. So that is, that is a, one of the things that I brought up in the meeting, where who is going to govern the input and the location. Those two things were important, so I wanted to bring that up. We did discuss these, and, and my understanding is, is just, we're writing up a contract to try to submit it and just get it approved. So we, like Mr. Bonzal said, we will be, have a, we will have a chance to modify and adjust. If this, if the Planning Commission does come back and approve something like that, I believe we will have an opportunity to change these. So, but on the other hand, I totally agree with everything that you have brought up. brung up, and we did discuss a few of those at the meeting, and I, so I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you. Just as a point of clarity, there, there are no contracts in place, and there's no pursuit of any contracts. We, we, we're trying to make it very clear that the way that, um, the program works in Cincinnati is not what we're endeavoring to do here. We're just trying to create a definition and guidelines, so that anyone who falls within the guidelines could utilize that definition to install an outdoor mural. So, I just wanted to make sure that's clear.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. I asked to go through the chair and ask Ms. Stevenson another question?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Is there anything in here, and I might be missing it, I apologize if I am, that, that describes what content is allowed, and what content, besides something offensive, is not allowed?
Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. There is a section titled "Definition: Original Art Mural." That would talk about what is allowed. It goes on to say, "Original art murals do not include," and it lists some things there. Allowed original art murals is another section, and it states what is applicable, possibly required by permit if approved as is. So, that would be what exists today. So, if there's more you'd like to add, those are the types of beginnings we have there.
I don't see anything about actual contact. I see no changing images, no murals containing electric or mechanical components, um, no part of a mural shall exceed 30 feet high. I'm talking about things such as, as I've got graffiti art, a mural-type things. Is there any way, um, is there anything in here that discusses the actual contact, what the contact, the content, and what the art actually is?
Thank you for that clarity, Councilmember Hanahan. The, the purpose of this is to say, um, and that this is a section on here, the second section, it says, "The purpose of this article is to discuss original art murals on a content-neutral basis, on certain terms and conditions." So, there is no intent to judge a mural based on content. That is the nature of a mural.
You answered my question. There is no, there's no restrictions.
Madam President, can I make one more comment?
Sir.
Thank you. So, um, just so everyone is clear, a sign is different from a mural. It's, so, the types of distinctions people might be used to from signs don't actually exist in the realm of murals. So, um, to underscore what Mayor Williams said, this will probably be pretty complex, and it will be important that there is, there is input. But just to make it clear, the absence of a prescription around how a mural looks doesn't mean it's undefined.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Mr. Thompson?
Um, totally understand, I think, the points that Mrs. Hanahan is making. Um, I would, uh, start off by addressing the idea of graffiti. The, the definition of graffiti is writing or drawings made on a wall or another surface, uh, usually without permission and within public view. So, any drawing put on a wall, regardless of how good or what style it is, then is graffiti if it doesn't have permission. The idea here is to offer that permission to somebody who submits to this process. So, then, it, it makes me think that the, the real issue here is, you know, you're, you're suggesting that, you know, what kind of content is allowed in a mural? Well, we could say that, um, flowers are allowed in the mural, and birds are allowed in a mural, and pictures of cars are allowed in the mural, and someone somewhere is going to not like flowers, birds, or pictures of cars. We're never going to have consensus in a committee or in a community on what is art, what is, uh, pleasing to one person, or what is pleasing to another person. That's not the point of murals. I think, um, as you said, that you, you see murals some places that you like, and you see some in some places that you don't like. I would venture to guess that all murals are though, are liked by somebody and not liked by somebody. So, I think we don't want to fall in the trap of defining good versus bad art in this, or good versus bad mural, good versus bad graffiti, or good versus bad, uh, I think maybe intention you could define. So, I think, I think honestly, what the best thing to do here is to, 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 what the process suggests, is let it move into Planning Commission and let public hearing happen. Um, I, because, and I would, I would challenge anybody who is against the idea of murals to find somewhere where a community has adopted similar, uh, policies, where they're like, "Oh, my God, I can't believe we let people have murals in our city." Generally speaking, um, when these are done, the community takes it upon itself to make sure that the murals are tasteful and at least artistically sound to, uh, several people's eyes and judgment. Um, so, I, I think let's let this process play itself out. Let's put it into, uh, the Planning Commission. Um, I plan on coming and talking about it when, as a citizen, not as a, as a council member, uh, when it happens, and you should too. Um, it's, it's, it's an interesting discussion. It's, it's, it's near and dear to my heart, not just the discussions of murals, but art in general, and, uh, and, uh, I think that's what we should be doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there any other discussion? So, to be clear, the motion on the floor is to accept the committee report in its entirety. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, sir.
My vote of seven to nothing, the motion carries. Next is Parks, Recreation, Streets, and Infrastructure Committee. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Madam President. To the Honorable Council of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your Committee of Parks, Recreation, Streets, and Infrastructure, uh, beg leave to submit the following report. Today's meeting, for 1919, the committee discussed conducting an audit of our streets, and would like to ask the council formally request the SSD to begin the process of, uh, finding somebody to do this. We talked about, uh, do we just want the committee to, to specifically request it, or would we like council as a group to specifically request that we begin this process? Because it does, uh, we've talked about it, uh, a couple times, I think, in talking about the, um, capital improvements plan and stuff, and so I thought maybe council would like to weigh in on whether or not, uh, we would like to ask the Safety Service Director to go ahead with that process. Secondly, uh, we discussed the future of Victory Park, uh, with several members of the community, and are, uh, moving forward with, uh, further planning and discussion for that area.
And signed by?
Oh, signed by, I'm sorry. We respectfully submitted. Eric Thompson, your chairperson, Andrew Clark, and Marilyn Hanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. It was your pleasure. Mr. Clark?
I move that the committee, committee report be accepted, and that we request a letter be sent to the Safety Service Director to begin process, um, of having a streets audit of all our streets.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzel. Is there any discussion? Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I just think moving forward with the streets audit is a great idea, just because we are now moving money into a streets fund for potential street repaving, and I think it'd be nice to have an outside perspective. I believe our previous audit is pretty old at this point. Um, so it'd be nice to have a professional, um, you know, give us input on which streets would be best to be repaved, first and, and priority.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to accept the committee report and send a letter to the Safety Service Director to request the beginning of the process of a streets audit. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no second and third readings of ordinances or resolutions, so we will move on to introductory reading of ordinances. And the first is, "An ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to sell surplus real property by internet auction, and to enter into an exclusive right to sell agreement with Keller Williams Pinnacle Group to conduct the auction during calendar year 2019 and declaring an emergency." Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I just wanted to inform everyone that because of my full-time position, I'll be abstaining from this vote.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. I would like to make a comment that I was stopped by somebody, um, on the street who apparently saw something on, um, an internet site. My grandmother told me a long time ago that a lie is as hard to unspread as butter on toast. And so, I'm hoping I can unspread this butter that's been put out there. Um, apparently, um, the question was raised whether a member of our police department and/or, um, a former member of our police department, who are both real estate agents, suggested that, that this was, that they were going to, that they worked for this company, and they were somehow gonna benefit from that. I called the individual today and got specific information that Keller Williams is a large international group that has many, and you can probably, you're shaking your head, you understand this, who has many franchises around the country. There are 165,000 agents. And so, none of the agents include the two, uh, police officers, either past or present. They are not involved in the Pinnacle Group. Both of those folks who were mentioned, apparently, work in the Seven Hills office. So, I'm hoping that the butter is unspread from what was going around, and, you know, if it's on the internet, then it's going, it's gotta be true, right? Um, so, before you, if anybody, before you have any hesitation about voting on this, I just wanted to give you that information. I confirmed with Mrs. Hanahan tonight that two people, two organizations presented to your Housing Committee, um, and, no?
To, uh, when it was in Mr. Bonzel's committee.
I'm sorry, and Finance Committee?
No.
Economic Development Committee?
Last year.
And you all chose this company, is that correct, Mr. Bonzel?
We guessed, we, we wanted to go with this company.
Madam President?
Yes. Mr. Moore?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. So, when we were, when I was first trying to figure out what to do with these parcels and the, oh, we're got all these back property taxes, all the rest of that, it was discussions like, well, we kinda need to get rid of these, we have no real use for them, or at least most of them. Um, how, what's the best way to do it? I contacted every auction firm I could find in the tri-state area. Two of them got back to me and said that they were interested in performing an auction of this kind. Um, and as you mentioned, they met with a Committee of Counsel and Mr. Bonzel's Committee, and we had lots of questions. At that point, we probably would've moved forward, but the, kinda consensus was, we need to pay off the back taxes before, uh, we moved forward, and the state auditor would not allow us to, kind of, bank on the proceeds of the auction to cover whatever tax liabilities may have existed at the time. And so, it took a very long time. But that is the firm, um, when I got the first draft of a proposed contract from the Penny Worley firm, uh, it was under the umbrella of Keller Williams, which, quite honestly, is the first time I saw Keller Williams at all, um, which was maybe a month and a half ago. So, this is the second round, the second version of this contract. Um, and I would just, what I was thinking was that, that what a lie can get around the world before the truth gets its boots on?
Ah, yeah.
Yeah. Um, I would, it, there's no rush on this, it's an emergency clause, just 'cause once it happens, we wanna get moving. Um, but I would recommend just having a first reading on this. There's, there may be some details, uh, the Safety Service Director and, uh, the Worley House and council may wanna work through, and I understand, and I, I would kind of expect the council has, um, may have a committee meeting or another council meeting, have, uh, Ms. Worley come here and go over some of the details with council, since, especially since we've got a number of members that were not on council when, uh, we had that committee meeting, it seems like 100 years ago. So, this is the contract. I think we're pretty much what we need to be. This is the ordinance that authorizes the auction process to go forward. That's what's in front of council tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Sankar?
Make a motion for they have the first reading, please.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson. Is there any discussion? Oh, did you have a comment you didn't wanna make?
No.
Okay. You wanted to make the?
I was just gonna make a motion.
Okay. So, motion on the floor then is to have the first reading. Is there any comment? Mr. Bonzel?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, I just wanna reiterate, well, one, thank Mr. Moore for his years of work on this process, but, you know, just reiterate, uh, what Mr. Moore was saying. Um, the other person that presented to us at that meeting, uh, they were out of Dayton, and they were a fine group. But it was, um, Ms. Worley seemed like she just kind of rose to be the group that we thought would be the, do the best, and, uh, I just wanna appreciate her for sticking with us all these years, because I don't honestly know if it's actually worth the money for them, her to continue to do this, because she has, this is drug on except for years. And so, and not to anybody's fault, but just the taxes had to get paid and other things too. So, um, I think it's a great choice. I did then, I still do, and, uh, I'm glad that we're moving forward with them.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Is there any other? I'm sorry?
Just, just one other thing, I just wanted everyone to know, since the last council meeting, I got the final word on the last four of the property tax exemption applications, and all of these properties are now tax exempt. So, we don't rack up more property taxes by not moving as quickly as we can. There are small assessments, but not property taxes, so.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Moore. Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. I just, I just wanna, um, state that, um, this is not something that we have rushed into. And I know it's been stated on the internet and all of that, that we haven't looked into this. It was in Mr. Bonzel's Economic Development Committee, then it came to housing. And we wanted to clear everything up before we did, and we looked at each property. I know Mr. Sankar has done a lot of work on it. Um, and, you know, and that's how we got to where we are now. It was not just a rushed decision, let's get rid of these properties.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Thank you all for helping unspread my butter. Mr. Moore, or, Mr. Mayor?
I wanna, I wanna thank Mrs. Lake for, uh, for clarification. Uh, and hopefully, this will signal an end to these, uh, cowardly attacks that are placed in public without any fact. And Ms. Lake took the time to look into it and investigate it. And as it turns out now, Mr. Moore's been working on this for a long time, Mr. Bonzel's been working on it, and the truth finally comes out, and I wanna thank you, Ms. Lake, for, uh, doing the background check and looking into it.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. Is there any other discussion? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I believe it was Mr. Moore who, uh, recommended or suggested that there could be a presentation to council. Uh, my question to you, Madam President, is, um, would we follow the motion on the floor with that request, or should that, um, request be added to the current motion?
I think if you want that, I'm sure Mr. Moore can just arrange that. We're just, we don't need to include it in the motion. He'll make sure that somebody comes at the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you both.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to have the first reading. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Abstain.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes.
My vote of six yes, one abstention, the motion carries. Please have the first reading.
"Ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to sell surplus real property by internet auction, and to, enter into an exclusive right to sell agreement with Keller Williams Pinnacle Group to conduct the auction during calendar year 2019 and declaring an emergency."
Next is, um, "An ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2019 and declaring an emergency." And I will, um, remind council that there was a new exhibit that was on your desk this evening. Um, Mr. Stiff, when I spoke with him today, uh, from the hospital, he called me to give me an update and asked me to pass this along to you, um, that, um, and I also had conversations with, um, our financial advisors, um, from the state, that, um, there were just a few changes that needed to be made. There were several changes that are different from the exhibit that was, um, sent out, and then this last one. And the reason is, um, that the plan is on the Financial Recovery Plan. We try to make our appropriations ordinance match the Financial Recovery Plan. The Financial Recovery Plan is based on a cash basis, and the appropriations are based on a accrual basis. Normally, our appropriations ordinance will match the Financial Recovery Plan, however, this does not. this does not. So before any more butter gets put on toast, in 2019, the Financial Recovery Plan includes encumbrances from 2018. So there were about $200,000 of encumbrances that were carried over last year that are included in the Financial Recovery Plan that are not included in the ordinance, because they're encumbered from last year in 2018. So lest there be a new rumor that appropriations, the appropriations ordinance doesn't match the Financial Recovery Plan, but it's because of the encumbrances being included in the Financial Recovery Plan this year, and that wasn't done in the past. And the, both of the advisors have approved the second exhibit that was on your desk. And I have the changes listed. I went through them, if you are interested in going over them. But that is the reason why some of them are decreased and some, mostly, some of them are increased, because to cover, to cover the cost of the encumbrances that were carried over, or that were, that he had originally had in here to carry over that aren't needed. Mr. Thompson?
Yes. Do we need to pass this tonight? Is there a quick timeline on that?
Mr. Bonzel?
I would definitely recommend that we pass this tonight. It's all, I mean, it matches the Financial Recovery Plan. It's important that we now get any appropriations that need to be decreased based on the plan, we get those decreased. Any that need to be increased, we get them increased. There's many things that I think that need to start getting worked on that are based on kind of this plan. So I, I would recommend that we definitely do pass it. And then one other item, too, is just, we do have the retiree benefit program this year. And in the changes, this is one of the first big actions that we took as a counsel. In there, it does include a penalty if the city doesn't pay it on time. So it's, I would just recommend that we get it done, just so that that penalty doesn't, the penalty could.
I don't blame it on the retirees.
Oh, no, no, no.
The checks aren't due until May 15th. I'll let you know that. And I'll give you an update on that soon. Ms. Thompson? I'm sorry. Ms. Thompson? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. Would you go ahead and go through the list you have? Which, which of the keys changed?
It's extensive. So if you go to your old one, the Mayor's Clerk and Court's Contractual Services used to be 1,800. It's now 1,550. The Earnings Tax Off, these are increases, they were increases. They're not, they're increased a little less now. The Earnings Tax Office Contractual Supplies had been 2,100,000, and now it's 2,89,001. The Building Department Personal Services had been 3,17, and it's now 62. The Fire Department Personal Services had been 7,43,790, and it is now 6,71,476. Fire Department Contractual Services had an increase of 8,500, and it's now 1,558. The Fire Department Materials and Supplies had been 67,000, and it's now 65,980. If you go down to Public Lands and Buildings Contractual Supplies, it had been an increase of 607,600. It's now 5,99,865. Public Lands and Buildings Materials and Supplies had been 23,000. It's now 19,317. Parks and Playgrounds had been an increase of 12,000. It's now 11,167. Health Administration Contractual Services had an increase of 15,000. It's now 14,515. Recreation Materials and Supplies is now, it had been 19,500, now 18,199. There's new lines on Fire Department Administration of Contractual Services of $2,028. And Street Department Capital Projects, there's now an increase of $85,000, assuming that's, that's for the equipment that is to be bought. Gee, here's a real big one. Fund 28 Developmental Impact Other Expense and 50 cents is new. The COPC Other Expense, $2.95. Fund 81 Building Code Assessment is 72 cents is new. Police Vehicle Replacement Other Expense New is 53 cents. Fire Department Fixed Asset Fund 83 New is $1.17. If you go to the decreases, if you go to the old attachment, Police Department, or Police Administration Personal Services had been a decrease in 9,071, and now the decrease is 10,00922. The Fire Department Administration Personal Services had been $735. It is now $2,704. Community Center Personal Services had been 568. It's now 737. Down in the Water Fund, the Personnel, Personal Services had a decrease of 1,97,667, and is now 32,36577. New decreases are the Mayor's Contractual Services of $55. New to, is Transportation Expenses Unassigned Vehicles. New is the $11,087. The Building Department Contractual Services, a new decrease is 14,702. The Police Crime Control Personal Services, the second one, 109,186 is new. Police Controlled Crime Contractual Services New, 11,501. And the one directly underneath that, Police Crime Control Materials and Supplies, 7,776. If you move down to EMS, the First EMS Contractual Services, 4,795 is new. EMS Materials and Supplies, $2,293 is new. And Economic Development Fund 13 is losing 48 cents.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to, first of all, give my condolences to Jim who's sitting right now, and also recognize the hard work that he's put into this and the hours. And we're lucky that, that he's willing to do this, and I appreciate him. I want to publicly thank him for this.
He did the updates from his hospital bed today. We were in conversation today three or four times about it.
Jim does a great job, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Breeden. It was a pleasure. Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we have all three readings of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is an ordinance promoting the citywide street sale, May 3rd and 4th, 2019, and abating all permit fees associated with the sale. Mr. Thompson?
I'd like to move that we have all three readings.
Want the first in its entirety, or just no?
Let's do, yeah, let's do the first in its entirety. Thank you.
Thank you. Second. Seconded by Mr. Sankar. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance promoting the citywide street sale, May 3rd through May 4th, 2019, and abating all permit fees associated with the sale. Whereas Counsel desires, desires to promote a semi-annual citywide street sale, to be held on Friday, May 3rd, 2019, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Saturday, May 4th, 2019, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and to have all permit fees associated with the sale abated. Now therefore be it ordained by the Counsel of the City of Norwood, State of Ohio. That's Section 1. The City of Norwood will have a citywide street sale on Friday, May 3rd, 2019, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Saturday, May 4th, 2019, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., during the calendar year of 2019. Section 2. Counsel for the City of Norwood hereby directs the Clerk of Counsel to advertise the citywide street sale by postings throughout the city and on Norwood Cable Television in order to notify residents of this event. Section 3. Norwood City Counsel hereby authorizes the abatement of all permit fees associated with the citywide street sale in order to promote participation in this semi-annual event. Section 4. The City will prepare a directory showing the location of all sellers in the citywide street sale. Section 5. Street sale sellers who obtain their permits seven days prior to the citywide street sale will have their addresses included in a city directory of street sale locations. This does not prevent participants from obtaining a permit after the seven-day deadline, but sellers who miss the deadline will not be included in the directory. Section 6. Counsel for the City of Norwood hereby authorizes each resident to have a yard sale in the front yard, side yard, and/or backyard on Friday, May 3rd, 2019, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Saturday, May 4th, 2019, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Section 7. There will be no rainout dates scheduled to replace May 3rd and 4th, 2019. Section 8. No home sale or street sale shall be conducted by the same resident or member of his or her family and/or the same residential property more than twice in a 12-month period. Section 9. No home sale shall offer any merchandise for sale that has been purchased by the resident for purposes of resale at home, at such home sale. Any new merchandise offered for sale shall be prima facie evidence of merchandise purchased by the resident for resale at such home sale. Section 10. Whoever violates or fails to comply with any provision of this ordinance shall be guilty of a minor misdemeanor. Ordinance promoting the citywide street sale, May 3rd and 4th, 2019, and abating all permit fees associated with the sale. Ordinance promoting the citywide street sale, May 3rd and 4th of 2019, and abating all permit fees associated with the sale.
Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that this ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Breeden. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is an ordinance providing the city, promoting the citywide street sale, September 6th and 7th, 2019, and abating all permit fees associated with the sale. Mr. Thompson?
Move we have all three readings.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is an ordinance providing the city, promoting the citywide street sale, September 6th and 7th, 2019, and abating all permit fees associated with the sale. Mr. Thompson?
Move we have all three readings.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance promoting the citywide street sale, September 6th and 7th, 2019, and abating all permit fees associated with the sale. Ordinance promoting the citywide street sale, September 6th and 7th, 2019, and abating all permit fees associated with the sale. Ordinance promoting the citywide street sale, September 6th and 7th, 2019, and abating all permit fees associated with the sale.
Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no introductory readings of resolutions. So, Mr. Mayor, administration reports?
Thank you, Madam President.
I sent Counsel an email, I believe on the 27th of March, and I'll give you a brief overview. I know you remember this. While the Financial Recovery Plan was adopted in March 27th, and will now move to the Financial Recovery Commission, I believe it's time for the Counsel and the Commission to consider adopt additional steps to be taken to improve our financial situation. First, let me suggest, this is based on goals of the recovery plan are achieved. As the plan stands now, it forecasts a recovery if followed. That itself is the intent. Yet at the same time, it projects a dim future for some. In order for some to sacrifice residents, employees, there must be an achievable goal or brighter financial status. Let me again, the following suggestion is based on implication of the plan. And I get, what I'm suggesting is Counsel consider, in the future, holding, committee of the whole meetings, sorry, Don, and consider the option of increasing our earnings tax. And I think we get input from all over. And the reason I say that is, I believe the City of Cincinnati is at 2.1. I think they're going to go to 2.4. I also believe that we're at 2. We should go to 2.3. There's a couple of reasons. Mr. Moore can address this, but I think it should be allocated. At one time, the city was at 1.7. They went to 2. And they, and they designated that 3/10 increase to capital improvements. Well, that didn't last long. They took the capital improvement funds and went out, and went into the general fund. So these are options that be considered. The outcome, some of the employees were not, negotiations are not going well, is the understatement. Nobody sees a future. And I understand that frustration, even though people are moving into the city. In order for us to move ahead, our cost is going to go up, and we have to absorb it. Now, this is another thing Mr. Moore can address. I'm not so sure if we can allocate how that earnings tax comes in and who pays it. I'll give you an example. When the governor of the State of Ohio cut off government sharing funds, townships were hit the worst. Sims Township, Sycamore Township, what they did was they formed a JED with the City of Madeira to form, to have an earnings tax. And they designated the geographical area and made their residents exempt. So could we, in fact, put an issue on the ballot to increase our earnings tax and make our residents exempt? I don't know. That could be determined in these meetings. But I really believe that we have to eventually make a move to increase our income. Now, we have some developments coming in, but we've got so much land. We're working with, was discussed before, TERREX. But I think it's a situation, and I know I've had people tell me that Counsel's not going to do that. It's an election year. And when I first got into politics, they wanted to raise the property tax 14 mils. And I didn't do it. And the theory was, I said, well, we can't do that. And they said, do it early in your term. They'll forget about it. Well, I think down the road in your future, you're going to see some sort of an attempt. We've had discussions about street levees. The street levee is good for five years. This is good. We're going to, we're talking about buying fire equipment. We're talking about doing streets. And we're talking about new rec centers. And we're talking about that. We've got to figure out, to maintain our service, we're going to have to raise our income. Lower operating cost is true. We have to, we have to work on that. But at the same time, we have to consider the option of raising our income. I will get into negotiations in a minute, but the bargaining units are not too happy with me now. We're trying to follow the plan. But somehow, there's got to be a light at the end of the tunnel. Somehow, if we, if we move to increase our income, it will indicate that things are going to pick up. Things are going to get better. Right now, I believe that most people believe that no matter what we do, we're not going to survive. It's going to go down. I think Counsel ought to consider it. That's all I'm asking, is consider it. Counsel, Committee of the Whole, have the meetings, have the impact done on what can be done legally, and see if we can't consider bringing in the income designated for capital improvement, designated for anything you want. But I think it's time, besides lowering our operating costs, and justifying lowering our operating costs, and at the same time, consider raising our earnings tax. Because like I said, Cincinnati is 2.1. Now, two, have we given earnings tax breaks to some people? Now, two, have we given earnings tax breaks to some people? Yeah. Well, theirs is going to go up 3/10 if you pass this. So, I mean, it's, I guess the earnings tax commissioner can do an estimate on what it'll bring in. The research can be done to see if it's legal to pass an earnings tax and make your residents exempt. That's just, and it's time that, I think we have to have it. Madam President, can you tell me, would it be August before, when's the deadline to put something on the ballot?
I don't know. I'm not certain. I'd have to look that up.
But I think it's worth council to consider. That's issue one. Issue two, we submitted a, presented to you, Clem Nelson, an update on negotiations. And it's a packet. And in that packet, the most important part is the last section, and it's called the mutually agreed dispute resolution procedure. We have been told time after time, negotiate, negotiate, negotiate. Well, we don't have anything to give. And I've been told, "Well, you guys got to get locked in a room and come out with something that's good, and stay there till you find a solution." I think there's a possibility, there is a solution. Because as I said at the planning commission, the state says, "You've got to do this. You've got to follow the plan. This is the funds. You can't go up. You must follow that plan." It goes to the commission, and the commission says, "Yep, you've got to follow the plan." And yet, like I said at the commission meeting, 4117 dictates on how we negotiate. 118, the higher revise code, is the fiscal emergency. And it's my understanding, both of them, at the conclusion, indicate that they take precedent over all other statutes. So, when I questioned Representative Attorney General sitting here, I said, "What are we supposed to do as a municipality?" 4117 says one thing, 118 says another, and we've got no support. We're following what they're telling us to do. The numbers got to match. You have to do this. Anna Mary and April Davis are great people. They're the financial superpower. The problem lies in Columbus. They want to come down, and they want to tell us, "You have to do this. You have to do that." Well, when you raise questions like, "What am I supposed to do?", you get this blank stare in the night. They won't even look at you. So, in my opinion, we got to attempt to solve it ourselves. And what I'm talking about is called mutually agreed dispute resolution procedures. Now, I ran this past one of the members of the police committee. Obviously, he said, "We don't trust you." I understand that. But what this does, if you look, both parties shall exchange, here and forth, both parties shall exchange proposals on all issues to be presented to the conciliator and a list of proposed joint exhibits at least 10 days prior to the scheduled hearing. The parties shall agree upon joint exhibits prior to the hearing. Five days to the scheduled hearing, we sit down, and we try to come to an agreement, and modifications can be made. So, you're forced to sit and talk. And then, it moves on to the conciliator. If, the bargaining units don't trust us tonight, okay, so that's true. What I would hope, if the bargaining units decide to go this path, that we can say, "Council passes a resolution stating that whichever way the conciliator rules, we'll honor it." I don't think that's asking too much. And if the state doesn't like it, too bad. But at the rate we're going now, it's destroying the city. And if we're supposed to talk, both sides got to have the belief that they're being equal treated. They're going in front of an independent conciliator and see what happens. And then, if council in their wisdom would say, "Okay, in order to solve this and get a better grip, we'll pass a resolution publicly stating that we'll honor the conciliator's decision." It accomplishes a couple of things. It accomplishes putting people in a room to settle, to negotiate, and make changes. And then, it gets in front of a conciliator and makes the decision. It's under 4117. I'm sure if, down the road, if this comes to pass and council would like more information or an upbeat, I think, you know, Kelly Bevcock would be more incumbent and happy to talk to you about it. But at the rate we're going now, we're not going to be close. We're not going to be close. There's no hope for the future, you know, with no income coming in. Everybody wants streets. Everybody wants, we got to have fire trucks. We got to have this. We got to have recs. We got to have all this. So, there's no hope. And that's what we need to take two approaches, one with the earnings tax and one with this to give some people some hope, and we'll live by it. We'll pass the resolution, and we'll honor it. If we lose, we lose. But so far, we're spending money, and we're not winning anything. And slowly but surely, it's taken a toll. It's taken a toll on this city, and it's taken a toll on everybody. And what concerns me just as much as anything is the idea that what makes it twice as deadly as an election year. But no matter what, we have to decide to do what we think is right, and yet, on the other hand, give people the assurance that if they just choose to go down this path, that this city will honor whatever comes out. And if they don't trust us, maybe the resolution will help. It may be as incentive. But right now, we're not getting anywhere. Rumors are flying. This is flying. This is going on. That's going on. We followed the plan. We've been accused, "The plan was designed to get the working guy." You know, well, the plan was developed by the numbers of the auditor's office, Anna Mary and April Davis and the commission. We've had I don't know how many meetings, and everybody just stands and stares, and we cannot get an answer. Nobody will give us an answer. So, this is an attempt to resolve it. Everybody presents their package that gives a chance to negotiate a couple of days and then go into the hearings. Maybe if everybody's put into that position where they're supposed, they have to find a position, and it's done quickly, maybe it'll force everybody to get off-center. And that's my thought on it. As far as I'm concerned, it's a last attempt to try to civilly solve it, because right now, we're not going anywhere. We're not going anywhere. So, I would hope that council would think about it, let us know if you want to go in that direction. We'll instruct the attorneys. If that's the direction you want to go, and you're willing to say, "We'll pass a resolution supporting the decision," then we'll move forward and approach them with it and see if that's what they want to do. If they do not, I don't know. I've said to council before, when there was questions asked, "Do you want to give out raises? Give out raises. Do you want to do this? Do it." But I think this is a good, you know, a good way to start down the road. And if it works, fine. If it doesn't, I don't think we've lost anything. So, I hope to hear from you. I hope you to make a decision on both the earnings tax and this mutual agreed assistance with the assurance that we can tell those bargaining units that council will honor the resolution. Am I worried about the commission and the state? No. I'm not. Because so far, all we get is dictates, and when we ask for assistance, we get that deer in the headlights look. So, if you've got any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. And I would hope that sometime in the near future, you would let us know which direction you want to go.
Mr. Sankar?
Madam President, question to the chair, to the mayor. You had mentioned about the possibility of having Kelly come in and maybe some to answer additional questions, but just looking at this, in number four, like you mentioned, everybody presents to each other their proposals.
Yes.
And I guess, kind of like, these have been the proposals we've been presenting back and forth all the while, I would assume, they'd be pretty similar to that. Now, at that point in time, the conciliator would look at these proposals and try to come to some resolution with both parties on each item or as a package, or would it be broken down with the conciliator, look at, you know, each item individually and say, "Okay, we're going to rule on this one this way, this one this way," or potentially, would it just be carte blanche, where it just, your side is what he's going with or she's going with, or this side is what the conciliator is going to rule on?
My guess would be, Mr. Sankar, that the conciliator, I think, you know, hopefully they've got common sense, would look at the spirit of cooperation. If everybody's stonewalled, if somebody's stonewalled and don't want to do anything, I don't think that'll bode well. But if everybody appears to be flexible, I'll be honest with you, I believe, I think from the city standpoint, I believe that if we enter into this, this is it. This is the last at-bat, and this is our last chance. I think it will encourage everybody to, you know, to pull their heels out of the dirt and work harder. So, I think Kelly could probably explain it to you better than that, but I think, because that conciliator's not going to waste much time. And I think a lot of the work would be done prior to going into it with a third party. I think a lot, if everybody agrees to it, and council passes the resolution, I think everybody will be more than willing, everybody, to say, "Okay, what can we do?" And basically, I'm telling you, put the state out of mind. So, I can have her come in and...
Yeah, it may be, maybe good or individuals could ask questions, but I think it'd be good for everybody to hear some of the answers. Number eight, the conciliator shall issue an award later than 14 days following the And I guess, what point of clarification would need to be, would that award be, you know, broken down, item A, B, C, D, or would the award be, like I said before, your side wins?
No, no. It would be broken down on the issues.
Okay.
We wouldn't sense that. Because if there's a decision made, it would be, it would behoove the city to come back and, you know, to lay it down to council and make it clear just exactly what's transpired. Because the bargaining units at that time would go back to their units, and I guarantee you, they'll have to break it down to their membership. But I'll be honest with you, I think it's our last shot. I mean, we'll take the direction you want us to go in, but I think it's the last shot, because how many times have I heard, "You need to get locked in or, you need to settle, you need to settle." Well, okay, here's an idea. Here's a way to do it. Then again, they say, "We don't trust you." I understand, and that's my way of eliminating it. Now, if we can see that if we get that indication from council, that if we, if there's an agreement to do that, and they agree to it, council passes the resolution, I think we'll move That's my thought.
Any other questions? Mr. Sankar?
Just a comment. I would think it would be, well, we would have to all see what we're going to be presenting. I know we're familiar with what has been presented in the past, but I do think, you know, she would come with, "Okay, here's what we're going in with." Just so you're aware, because if all of a sudden, council would happen to agree on a resolution...
I agree.
And then, somebody says, "I didn't agree. I didn't see that Article 4 in there. That wasn't part of what we were looking at." I just think beforehand, everybody should know exactly what we are potentially agreeing to before that we would, you know, step into this arena. But I do agree, I think we're at kind of a, well, obviously, at an impasse, and then things are going super well in hearing, you know, members of the committee that was here last week, you know, it, you know, they're approving things, but they're really, from meetings I've been in with them and listening to them, they really don't give much guidance. They're just kind of approving things and saying, "Yeah, that's what you should do," or that, they really don't give you any real guidance on where to go, except, you know, you need to cut things, you know, you got to make things balanced. So, I mean, it's easy to say, but, and, but I do think it's worth taking a look at. I think if we all see what we're looking at proposing before going into something like this, before we even would commit to that, I think it's, would be worth the effort. So, whenever she's available and council's available. And as I said, everybody needs to read every page of what we're going in proposing with if we get to this point.
My thought is, Mr. Sankar, that we, unless, I look at council favors, and I say, "We don't want anything to do with this, period," then we're dead. But if I get the impression that council's, they're sort of receptive to it, then I think we contact her and sort of formulate a plan and throw in the possibility of a resolution and make the approach to see if it's, if the bargaining units are receptive to it. And if they're not, they're not. I think, you know, there's been strategies that they want to draw it out, you know, and hope that I'll be gone, I'll be, I will be gone, and they can move on. Well, I don't know. There's all kinds of theories, but I know while them theories are floating around, we're not getting anywhere. I think we have to consider that earnings tax, because if people that work for this city don't see any light, it doesn't help. And right now, the batteries in our flare's light are dead, and we don't have a light to shine on them. And so, we're listening to the state, we're listening to everybody else, and I think it's an opportunity to at least attempt.
Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick process question. So, if we were to go that route, the conciliator comes back with their decision, we have to ratify it?
It's final.
It's final. Okay.
And so, what, so in order to give you a comfort level, like Mr. Sankar run up a valid point, we can have Clem Nelson come in and give you an update, give you an overall feel of the situation, because I can tell you this, I can see it drawn out, drawn out, drawn out, drawn out. out, drawn out, drawn out, drawn out. So this is a way to, you know, resolve, because sooner or later, it's going to get resolved. And it, you know, and the sooner the better, the sooner the better.
Madam President. Mr. Moore?
Thanks. Just to put some context on this, the general process is, you send notice to the unions, we're ready to negotiate, they send notice to us, the contracts are getting close, we want to negotiate. The city sent that in September. I think there have been a couple, three meetings with the unions, there hasn't been a lot of motion on it. The processes, once the city and the bargaining units, for the police and fire anyway, get to an impasse, then you go to fact finding. And if there's a big hearing, you present all your exhibits, you do the whole thing, and then a month later, the fact finder's report comes out. And then if, if the council objects to it by a super majority, or if the union objects to it by a, by whatever their vote is, then it goes to a conciliator. Given where the parties are now, given how far apart the parties are on minimum manpower and pay, and raises, and cost of living, and health insurance, and comp time, and all the other things that go into these contracts, the impression is, well, fact finding is going to be a waste of time, because one side or the other's going to peel it. And basically, what this talks about is skip that, go to conciliation, that's where the final decision is made. That's kind of what, I think that's the thinking behind this. And yeah, I think there's some questions on, is this conciliation going to match, like, what the conciliator can do, their authority on pick this, pick that, or make a compromise? To clarify some of that, is that going to match what's in 4117? I think the assumption is, yes, it would be exactly the same as that, we're just basically skipping that whole long-drawn-out, three, four, five-month process for fact finding to get to the conciliation, because all of the things that we do in the fiscal recovery plan, and all of the things we talk about for doing streets, moving public works guys out of the street department, out of the water department, about improvements to the buildings, about equipment, about all the rest of those things, if we get a conciliator, award that comes down and says, as they did in the late 90s, said, no, you need to increase minimum man by three people, we're done. I mean, that's just done. There's no way we'll ever get far enough ahead. But we need to know that. It's better to know that this year, hopefully maybe by the end of the summer, than it is six, or eight, or nine months, or a year from now. How long did the police, did we take to get the fact finding of the police? You know, there's, these things have drawn out for so long, the sooner we get answers on that, the sooner we can go to the fiscal recovery commission and the state and say, hey, we've got a conciliator award, that's binding, this is like a court judgment, what do you want us to do? How do we deal with this? Where do we go from there? So the sooner we get there, the better. So that's essentially what going with the mad option is. And so I think that apparently, that at least something the mayor's getting is like, well, if council says they'll abide by it, which we don't really have a choice, as far as the conciliator decision, the idea is like, if we can get rid of that middle step that serves no, will factually serve no purpose, because the fact finder's not going to come out with a report that is going to be sort of this way, or sort of that way, and one side or the other is going to be, just, no, it's not, that's not doable. At least that's what we're, what we're thinking. So that, I think at this point, the mayor's looking for some, if anybody's got objections, to at least pursuing that as an option, and moving forward in that way. Is that, is that about right?
You hit it right on, just perfect, Keith. See, the thing about it is, is to project the image, or, I'm not going to lie, and I, if I go in and say, or we have somebody go in and say, look, we're looking in a way of, unless it's out of hand, we, we'll, we'll honor them. Because like I said, they don't, they don't trust us. And right now, we're not going anywhere, and we're not going to go anywhere. It's as simple as that. And, you know, well, we can sue, we can do that, we can go to the Supreme Court. You know what, that's hogwash, because will I be looked on favorably by the state? No, but frankly, Martha, I don't give a damn. I mean, you know what I'm saying? I don't care, because so far, we've suffered the agony of going through this thing. And what's the state done? Nothing. Nothing. April Davis and Anna Mary, yeah. The rest of the state, nothing. The individuals or the commissioner from private industry, they don't have a clue. They're nice people, dedicated people, care about the city. They have no clue of what municipal finance is, and the regulations that we face. So I think we, we talk to Kelly, decide whether to make the impression, you know, make the, make the suggestion, and work from there, and go from there. But I can tell you this, will it follow the plan? But if, if that's the desire, I would just like to give some indication of whether you think it's possible, or whether we should, should even bother to make the attempt. Because like I said before, this executive session on negotiations is done, as far as I'm concerned. We deal with it in the open.
Any other comments? Mr. Sankar?
Just a comment, I would suggest that, that council think about it, don't communicate to other council members about it.
Lord, don't text each other.
But, but the mayor and our negotiators know what, what your thoughts are, pros and cons. And so if it is a step we want to pursue, then we'll, we'll take that step. But I do think, just leave on it, and let them know what your thoughts are the next few days here, so we can possibly move forward with some resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Sankar. Mr. Bonso?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you being here, presenting some ideas that I guess that are here that we are to consider. I first want to state that meeting an executive session is the decision of council about whether we just want to meet an executive session and talk about something. So it's totally fine if the mayor doesn't want to be there, but if we feel like we need to talk about this, because this is a critically important subject for the future of this city, and I cannot stress that enough. I mean, this is probably the most important thing that this council has to deal with when it comes to the labor agreement, or the collective bargaining agreements for police and fire. You know, in the past, I've thought that, man, maybe this could be a good idea. I definitely think that we have to truly think about this very, very closely. I mean, the reason why this city, unlike most ethnic cities in our area, is even in these constant fiscal crisis, or especially the one that we've had, we've been fiscal watched for many years before we were in fiscal emergency, is because this city does not have the management rights to dictate staffing like almost every other city does in Ohio. We are an oddity. This is not something that every city has to deal with when you see, you know, council members struggling about how to balance the budget. We are forced, for 70% or 65%, however, you know, the exact amount fluctuates every year, we're forced to spend X number of dollars in the police and fire departments, whether we want to or not, council doesn't get to decide that. And so, and that's in a normal situation. And so if, for what the mayor's asking, is that, you know, we say, we pass a financial recovery plan that we said, look, we want to spend this much money for the next five years, each year, and we don't want to go over that. Now, however that gets done, actually, the first year, the first two years when we did the financial recovery plan, we just put a dollar amount in there and said, however that gets done, that's what we want done. At that point, though, we had unions that were negotiating, oh, well, you can increase staffing, it still fit it within the amount that council appropriated. And it turned out not to be true, because their argument, you know, we ended up winning that argument, that, no, it wouldn't work, and then we still had to appropriate more dollars for that department, and we didn't increase the staffing like they wanted us to, or the minimum manpower in that department. And so, you know, this is something that, again, this gives me a lot of angst, because, you know, at some point in the past, an elected, elected officials thought that it would be a good idea to put these minimums in the contract, and from there on out, they have binded every council since then. There's people that are, you know, were on council in the early 2000s, and they dealt with the exact same thing that we are. Mr. Moore was on council for many years before he was law director, and pretty much his entire time there, he had to figure out how to cut things, like, what are we going to cut next? What are we going to cut next? This council and this fiscal recovery plan that we passed, it included essentially, it's a draft plan, but soon to be a permanent one, but $7.6 million in capital expenditures for duly needed items, refurbishments of parks, ladder trucks for the fire department, engine for the police, for the fire department, cruisers for the police department, HVAC, apparently, the HVAC system's been, you know, all over Facebook lately, the HVAC system of police departments included in that, because the chief requested that we consider that, and that's for 2020. And we put all of that in jeopardy if something comes back here, and it is an unfavorable position for the city. When we did the financial recovery plan analysis, the mayor smartly asked, well, what happens if we, you know, we fund the departments at exactly what the departments want, you know, or what the unions want, that we have X number in this one, X number that one, what they've been asking for, and that we just give a 2% raise each year? Like, what does that do to the financial recovery plan? Well, we go from, after five years, some portion in the positive, to $10 million in the negative, if we were to give everything that everybody wants. And so, you know, the issue is that we can't do that, like, it's, it's not possible. And so I truly believe that, you know, it is, it's not right that the city of Norwood does not have the management rights that we need to manage the departments effectively. And it's a, you know, that could be an unpopular opinion, it could be one that, you know, I get people that are upset at me, but it's the absolute truth. That is the reason why we are always in fiscal crisis. The unions can go as hard as they want in negotiations, and go as hard, and they know that we can never touch staffing. In other cities, if you push too far, and you get too much of an award, they might have one less police officer on staff, they might have one less patrolman at night shift, because they can't afford to keep moving. But the city of Norwood is forced. And so when you see the Victory Park pool closed, when you see the Birdwood Pool closed, when you see other deterioration around the city, it's because this council, and all the previous councils, can't actually fix it. We can't fix it because of the collective bargaining agreements. And so now that we're in fiscal emergency, we've said, look, this is how much we're spending, and we're not going over it. If we rush this through, and we get this unfavorable thing, and we say, you know what, we're just going to follow it, we put all of these improvements that we have set aside, or that we're going to set aside, right out the window. And I keep hearing too, I just want to say this, that we're losing police officers, that police officers are going other places, they're going to Blue Ash, they're going to Mason, they're going whatever. And I keep saying that they don't like riding in bad equipment, and, you know, they don't like having a police station that's too hot in the summer, and too cold in the, in the winter. Well, the problem is, we're spending so much on personnel, we can't fix those issues. We can't get police cruisers at work. The last two police cruisers we had were hand-me-downs essentially from Westchester. Is that fair to our police officers? I truly believe it's not. But I don't understand this, then, so you have that on one equation, then you have, you know, this push that to staff, staff, staff. Well, I don't understand what it is. Do we need to staff it, or do we need good equipment? Are we okay with hand-me-down police cruisers? If so, then the police, the police union just needs to say that. Are we okay with a 25, or 30, or 35-year-old ladder truck? Okay, well, just, fire union just needs to tell us that. We won't buy the ladder truck. I mean, that's essentially kind of where I'm at right now, because it is an impossible situation. And then you have people that are continually wanting to come to us, because they're frustrated that the streets are bad, everything else is bad, and it's bad because we can't do anything about it. And so as I kind of close, I also want to give one comment on this earnings tax increase. I will not support it, I don't think it's right, I think it's kicking the can down the road, there are, we have to get the contracts actually fixed, and we have to get the management rights back. Now, if we had that back, I might be able to support something like that. But we're not, I cannot, we cannot bind all of these future councils, the next 20, 30, 50 years, forcing them into GM-level eras of staffing, when they won't be able to afford it either. Madam President, thanks for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Bonso.
Again, look, if we don't go this road, then what direction are we going to go? We're going to go into binding arbitration anyway. This expilates it, and this, this sets up, this sets up a procedure to try to work an That's what this does. This sets, this is a procedure, like Mr. Moore said, this sets up the possibility of an agreement. And I understand the frustration, I've said enough, and I, you know, but I believe that after all the, oh, I almost said a bad word, this happened, I think we need to try it. Because we're not going anywhere, and it's not going to go anywhere. And if you would like to take over negotiations, feel free. But it's not going to go anywhere, unless we're going to have to end up in arbitration anyway, then speed the process up. But this presents an opportunity to have discussions, to talk. And when I hear somebody say, we're willing to talk to you, we're willing to talk to you, well, that's, come on, that's, that's negotiation language. Now's the opportunity to set it out, to set it out. And I, you know, and I, I believe that we need to reduce our operating costs. The rhetoric, whether it's from council, whether it's a goose on it, social media, rhetoric's got to stop. I'm not going to do it. I want to concentrate on trying to come up with some sort of a formula and a process to get this thing settled. And if council does not want to do it, don't do it. I'm out of answers, I'm out of rabbits. There's no more rabbits in the hat. I'm willing to, you know, take the beating, let's try to work this thing out, let's try to get it settled, structurally, not backdoor, not shoot your mouth off on some computer, but regular brass settlement and discussions. And we'll keep counseling for it. And I said, I don't want to get involved, you want to have an executive session, have it, have all you want. But I remember Ms. Hanrahan said, she said, I said something in executive session and got out, and I said, welcome to the real world. You think you're, what you're going to say in executive session doesn't get out, it always does, so. But that's my feeling, if council wants to do it, fine. If they don't, I understand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Mr. Sankar's comments are well taken, think about it, and we'll get back to you.
Marilyn?
I'm sorry.
I was just going to come up with a suggestion, see how everybody felt about it, having a special meeting, have Kelly Babcock there. I believe in executive session, going into executive session, and talking about it. If we wait until it's an, or until it's a meeting, you know, our meeting might go on until 9:30, and then we start executive session, we're all worn out and tired, I think we ought to do, when we do this, we need to have a special meeting, so we can start fresh, and, and sit down and go over all the details, and then decide what we want to do.
I can give you the risk on, on what it is, and I think Mr. Moore laid it out perfectly. Mr. Moore laid it out perfectly. I, I think if it's, if it goes to binding arbitration, you know, we're just going to lose time. But that's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your bond to other requests to address council, at least the rampstead are leaves. Jay Brock? If you'll, thank you for your patience, your persistence in getting through this. If you'll give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to address council.
Sure. Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, members of council. I'm Jay Brock, I live up on Cathedral Avenue, Ward 4, and I've heard a lot tonight, so this has been very informative, so thank you very much. First of all, I just find, what I really want to talk about is probably more aesthetically, you know, talking about the murals, and how we're going to define art, and things of that nature. Interesting to me, as we look at, you know, our on-ramps and our exit ramps to 562, that are a little squirrely, with a lot of trash, and things like that, so I find it interesting that we're, we're a little stuck on what we're going to try to define as art, but we've got an aesthetic, just general aesthetics challenge, in my mind, in my opinion, that we could use some help on. Understanding, I appreciate the comments that have been made too, about some of our fiscal challenges, and I appreciate those as well, but if there's a way that, you know, I can help with that, or the community at large, I know there's some other entities that were here earlier tonight, I'm happy to do that. that were here earlier tonight, I'm happy to do that. And if there's a call that needs to be made from the council to the community, I think that's something that maybe we should, we could leverage as well in this to help kind of clean up those on-ramps, those exit ramps, those main thoroughfares, things like that. I'm out there every week picking up garbage. I'm the crazy garbage picker guy on Montgomery Road, and so I'm trying to do my part, but I'm also trying to broaden this network a little bit as well. When I drive home every night, you know, coming up 562 to Montgomery and I'm, you know, seeing tires and all kinds of nonsense that's occurring. And I appreciate there's a challenge with ODOT and who owns what and the first three, seven fifths of a mile or something like that, I think the metric is, but I'd like to have some help, if there is help available, from our team on that, to help kind of just pick that up once in a while so that we can balance out both, you know, bringing beautiful new murals, I hope they're coming, from artworks, which I love, and, but also just the general aesthetic of our community so we can lift that up as well. So, that's, thank you very much for your time. So, thank you.
Thank you. You may want to, are you hooked up at all with the quality of life group?
Well, I've heard a little bit about, thank you for the question. I've heard a little bit about the quality of life. I've heard a lot of discussion. I, I don't know how, I think there's some doing happening too, so I've, I've sent them some communication, so, a little bit. So, thank you very much for that, I appreciate it. But, so if there's a call that needs to come out from you all, please, there are, like quality of life, and there are some others out there too, I think sitting in the audience tonight, you all as well, we're happy to help. And we, we are proud to be here. I've been here a long time, and I had hair back then, so happy to be a partner in this. So, think about that as we move forward, but would like some help on that, specifically at 562.
All right. Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Mr. Brock. After the meeting, would you be willing to give us your contact information?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to respond to your ask for a call to action, but first I'd ask, could you repeat your name again?
Sure. It's J.Y. Brock, B-R-O-C-K.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. I, I am remembering that at our last regular meeting, we shared out, I believe Mr. Bonsall did, that there is a highway cleanup happening this Saturday.
Okay.
It is cosponsored by ODOT and Keeps Cincinnati Beautiful, and it is focused on 562.
Oh, wonderful. Okay, that's great. I did not know this.
There's an opportunity, I'm sure you can still participate. I don't have all the details in front of me, but I know that there was an event on Facebook that I believe is called State Highway Cleanup. It's definitely this Saturday. I think it's 9 o'clock. If you hang around, I'm sure it's in the minute somewhere, but I do want you to know that, Mr. Brock.
No, thank you for the education. I appreciate that.
And if you also would like to hang after, I can make sure you get contact information and a copy of some of the goals that are being worked on with the plan.
True.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Mr. Braden?
Thank you, Madam President. Just to pick up on Ms. Stevenson's comments, I believe they're meeting at the ODOT.
At headquarters, yeah.
On, is that Paddock, Seymour? Seymour.
Yeah, and I can talk about that too. And I'll talk about that too again, give more details for that. I can do it now if you want.
Sure.
Yeah, so it's April 13th, Saturday, from 9:00 to 1:00. So, anybody wanting to participate should meet at the, I guess, the ODOT garage, 1400 Seymour Avenue, Seymour Avenue. The city of Norwood, it's the first time, they've been doing this for a couple of years at least, this is the first time the city of Norwood that we know of is gonna be partnering with them. We're, there'll be Public Works employees that'll be providing kind of safety and also a dump truck for the trash that we pick up. And then we're gonna have the senior center, one of the vans that the city owns or the shuttle buses, actually taking, going around and taking the volunteers to the various sites so that nobody has to, like, drive or park on the lateral, anything else like that. You don't have to walk in anywhere on the lateral. The, the bus will drive and just drop us off at sites that we'll kind of pick up, we'll put the trash in the dumpster or the dump truck, get back on the bus, and just go to the next site. So, it should be really convenient and easy.
Safer.
Yeah, very safe, yeah, very safe. And so, and also, Keeps Cincinnati Beautiful and ODOT are gonna do all the safety training for the volunteers, because normally we wouldn't want people on the lateral, but they'll have safety training, they're gonna have a desk for us, they're gonna have garbage pickers for us. So, it's actually interesting, so it's really great opportunity this, this Saturday, so, from 9:00 to 1:00. And then one other note about this really cool, that UDS is their presenting sponsor of this, so they've given them a $15,000 grant to do this, so considering UDS headquarters are here, it's pretty neat that this effort is gonna be able to extend into the city of Norwood.
That's wonderful. Glad to hear that. Thank you as much.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Brock.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate the education. That's exciting. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. And thanks for your patience. We'll move on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? Mr. Bonsall?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to follow up to the comments I made a second ago. It was not an indication of any effort that the mayor is doing or anything that's being presented, it's more just a general frustration of being an elected official in the city of Norwood. And I'm telling you, every, we all feel the same frustration because you want to do and fix everything. And this financial recovery plan has seemed to kind of provide us an opportunity to get caught up. My concern is just I wouldn't want to jeopardize that opportunity that we've been given. So, that was just my only concern. You know, I'm glad that you're here, I appreciate it, and glad that at least we have a proposal to maybe try to move things forward, so we'll definitely think about it and consider it.
Thank you, Mr. Bonsall. Any other unfinished business? At the last meeting, there was a representative here from Duke Energy who talked about the meeting that was taking place, and I attended that along with Jason and Taylor Providence were there, and I'm sorry, I forgot your name these couple years. They went, I apologize.
The Moore family. The Moore family, yeah.
The Moores, thank you. Will DeLuca, I think that was all the Norwood residents, but it included Norwood and Oakley and Evanston, and it was an open discussion about the Duke Energy. They asked us if we had any recent reactions or indications with them or any, if we had positive or negative things. I'm certain that Renee Durker will be very happy that I brought up the way they butcher our trees, the Vs in them, that's like her main, her main thing, and mine as well. We talked about positive and negative things that happened. And then eventually, we got down to the nitty-gritty. They wanted to tell us about their pipeline that is coming, that they're trying to get. And there was actually a meeting today with the, what they call the siting board, where they were giving evidence about the pipeline and some modifications that they had made to kind of give information about where that would go. No matter which route they take, it will terminate at, at an area near Cincinnati Gardens that is already there. There's a, apparently, the backup for our system, if there's extreme cold, is provided by propane, and it's not as, it's more expensive, it's harder to store. So, what they have agreed to is to decrease the size and the pressure of the pipes. They've increased the safety standards to make it twice, the pipe twice as thick, and they have agreed to put it two times the depth that's required by law. They asked us what, only about 2% or 2.5% will, of the pipeline, whatever, whichever route they take, will impact residents, and, but they asked us about what happens, how should they make it right for people? So, we said, you know, you should not only return it to its original condition, but make it better. We talked about when they open streets, that they should pave the whole street, not just a, just a little section, and I said, gee, you know, I'm sure people in Indiana might would probably love to have your pipe come up so we could get our street repaved, or a lot of people in Norwood would like to have that. But, at any rate, the alternatives are, basically, it kind of follows I-71 coming through, through Fairfax or I-75. So, it's kind of one of those two corridors. And so, they just had a conversation and asked for input from people. So, I appreciated it, and I think, you know, other people appreciated that we were actually able to give input. I'd say there were maybe 15 or 20 people there, and there were several people, including the president of Duke Energy, Ohio, and Kentucky and Indiana. So, I think they were taking these conversations pretty seriously, so I just wanted to let you know that I did go and represent the city. So, all right. Is there any other unfinished business? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to circle back to the rules of council. You drafted some changes for us to consider, and I, I think we've had them for a couple meetings now. I did get a chance to review it and feel pretty good about moving forward. I did have a couple, just points of clarity, I believe it was Mrs. Hanahan that just made a comment around executive section, session, and the way our rules are drafted, executive session would be a new, potentially new section. Could you maybe just clarify, because executive session is a motion that council makes, is it feasible to, and I think we've talked about this, but just a great refresher, is it feasible for council to make a motion, have it approved, to go into executive session at a later date? So, we've had, I think the comment that was made just now had to do with when, in terms of time of day executive session happens. So, I don't know that it's spelled out in the draft we were most recently given, but just wonder if you could speak to, can a motion for executive session be made and the session actually be held at a later time?
I don't think so, but I'm going to defer to the Law Department, Mr. Moore.
The question is whether.
You can't say, "I want to go to an executive session at a later date or time."
Council can, but it's like anything else, it's like, I want to discuss this at this meeting. When that meeting happens, council can change their agenda on a regular meeting. I mean, you can, or we're not gonna talk about that today. It's, the motion has to be made at the meeting when you're actually having the executive, we're actually right, when you're going to.
Like, when you go in, yeah. That was my understanding, but I wanted to make sure legally I was correct. Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Moore. So, just as a, make sure I have the right context, the motion has to be made at the meeting when executive session will be held. Is it feasible to have a special meeting for the purpose of calling an executive session?
You can have a special meeting and then go into executive, you have to say the purpose of the special meeting. We can call an order and then we can, if it is a subject that is allowed to be in executive session, you can then make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing that item.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do you agree, Mr. Moore? I don't want to be an attorney.
Yes, we've had, we've had special meetings that were specifically to go into executive session to talk about fact-finder's reports or, and whatnot, so it's not, it's not unheard of.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business? Any other, any new business? Ms. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. A couple, about a month ago, I wasn't here last week, or I would've done this last week. We had two big rounds of storms again. I was out driving around after the storm, picking up branches, and decided to drive over to Elm Street. To no surprise, it was flooded. I spotted a disabled senior and she was raking out the storm grate. I stopped to help, and I had made a loud comment about the able-bodied young men on the porch next door. With that said, one of them immediately jumped up, came to help. Just needed a little pushing and suggest, suggestion. After he cleaned the drain, two of his buddies came down and the three of them took a large rump he can, and we filled it to the top with street debris from the corner grate, to the very top. And it was heavy, and he was, two of them pulling it back. This was all being done in the pouring down rain. I want to add that Mr. Braden also was out that night surveying things, stopped and asked if he and his wife could help. I would ask that the clerk of council put together a letter thanking these young men and note that their community service absolutely made a difference during that storm, and the drainage and the flooding wasn't as bad after they cleaned out the drains. Just for your, the names of the men, the young men, were Christopher Taylor, Nicholas Taylor, and Zachary Hannah. And I think that, and I will get their addresses, I know where the house is. And I just think it would be very nice if we recognized what they had done.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Any other new business? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. Earlier this year and probably mid-last year, two different residents approached me about the T-21 proposed policy change. For those who may not be familiar here on council or in the public, the city of Cincinnati just passed a resolution changing the legal age at which a person can purchase tobacco. It's now 21. Did I misspeak?
It's, merchants can't sell.
Merchants, I'm sorry, can't sell. I'm so sorry, I did misspeak on that. Thank you. Merchants cannot sell. Thank you, that is an important distinction. There's a couple of residents that have asked that we consider that. I have a letter that I will forward out to the members of council for your review, but I'd like to recommend that that be a topic referred to health, housing, and public safety for consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. I think the state of Ohio is, recently is considering that as well, so, thank you. Any other new business? Mrs. Hanahan?
I would like to call a meeting for the housing, health, and public safety. I would like to, I'm just gonna keep this one issue when we have this meeting, and I would like it to be the building department fees so that we have time to sit down and actually discuss them and we're not rushed. I was wondering if the 16th, next Tuesday or Wednesday, the committee would be available?
It would be better.
Yes, ma'am.
Who else we have here? Are you on that one? Can you do Wednesday? No, you're not on that. So, let's do Wednesday. What's a good, is 6:30 a good time? Okay. We'll do it here. So...
Wednesday, April 17th at 6:30?
Oh, you know what? Wait a minute, I am so sorry, that's my son's birthday. I don't wanna, I could get in trouble for that one.
Yeah, you could.
You know what? We're gonna do it. This is important, and I want to really get, I want to really, I want to get working on this.
Here in council chambers?
Yeah. Can, oh, I'm sorry, yes. Can we make it 6 o'clock?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. So, Wednesday, April 17th, 6 o'clock, Housing, Health, and Public Safety Committee for the purpose of discussing building department fees.
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you.
Mr. Braden?
I must've missed the, the, did somebody can't make Tuesday? I hate for you to miss your son's birthday. Did somebody can't make Tuesday?
He can't make Tuesday.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
So, it's okay, I will go out to eat with him afterwards. We won't be a three-hour meeting, like our last one.
Thank you.
Or if it wasn't three, it was four.
Thank you. Any other new business? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. Last year, we, as council, had a chance to review some changes to the agreement the city has with Paycor. At the time, I noted that we have a clause in that agreement that talks about hiring Norwood residents, and so I want to share an update. I've met with Paycor staff a couple of times now to figure out where are we, how's it going? The goal is to track the number of new hires and the percentage of those new hires that are Norwood residents. The client services team at Paycor is very interested. They have gathered an internal team to really start looking at how to help residents better understand what Paycor does and how they are invested in the community. They had some very fun ideas that are in the works, so I just wanted to give an update on that. The target timeline for their next hiring fair specific to Norwood is late July, August. And so, as we continue to meet and make plans, just want to share here, but also look forward to promoting throughout the city that opportunity to residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Any other new business? Move on to communication, we just have one, Mayor Williams regarding mayor's court fines for March 2019.
Madam President and members of council, enclosed, please find the report for Norwood Mayor's Court for the month of March 2019. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm moved to receive and file the report.
I am moved to receive and file the report.
Seconded by Mr. Brayden, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonsall?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, sir.
All members present, voting aye, the motion carries, we have no absent embers. Mr. Bonsall?
Thank you. I move adjourned.
Seconded by Ms. Stevenson, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonsall?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, sir.
All members present, voting aye, the motion carries, this meeting is adjourned.